All right, we'll call the April 23 Pike County Commission Work Session to order. We've got several guests tonight. We'll start with Mrs. Bethany Allen of the Pike County Chamber of Commerce. You want to come up?
Well, hello, everybody.
Good evening.
Thank you. Thanks so much for having me. Glad I'm able to make it. The last two times I was out of town and has some stuff, so sorry. It's been awhile. I got here in January just making it by, but very thankful for all y'all done. For those of you that don't know, Bethany Allen, President of Pike County Chamber of Commerce, started the last week in January. I'm from Elba, Alabama, came to Troy, school at Troy in 2011, graduating by the degree of broadcast journalism, minor in leadership development. I worked downtown at Globe. Started in 2013. I was there all the way until 2022, here and there, give and take. I was in Savannah, Georgia a little while. So in 2022, I moved to Huntsville, and I came back first of this year for this job. Excited to be here. Small businesses have a big place in my heart, so I'm excited to serve the 450 current members we have in the chamber. We've gotten nearly 25 new businesses just this year, so super excited about the growth there. And just want to thank you all for your support, especially last week at our annual spring book involved tournament. Thank you for your sponsorship. You all were a lunch sponsor. And then Mr. Russell Johnson, thank you for having a team in the tournament as well. It's a huge success, and it would not have happened without the support of our community, so thank you all.
Thank you, Bethany. Good to see you.
Any questions for me?
Can I go ahead and say something, Beth? I'm glad you chose wisely between Savannah and Huntsville or Pike County.
I'd rather wait.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Malden, you want to come up and make some introductions?
Yes, sir.
So we've got, so as we discussed at the last meeting, some ladies from Pike County High School did very well with the future business leaders. And Ms. Malden, also good representation that you had five, right?
Yes, sir.
Well, you said you want to make some introductions and tell us their accomplishments.
My name is Vanessa Malden. I'm in my first year as a Future Business Leaders of America Advisor for Pike County High School. I actually participated in this a couple of years ago, myself, so I'm excited to be back. Pike County High School is my alma mater, so my heart is there. My children all graduated from Pike County High School, two graduated from the actual business academy that I'm working in now, so that just makes it all the sweeter. But I do have four of my ladies here that went to state. I have a team that did a role play in event planning. I have Oriana Stroll, Rainey Cross, and Brooklyn Jones. They did a role play for event planning.
Don't come up big with it, because she knows you're... You're not going to get away with that either.
These ladies had to practice and do an objective test while we were here in Pike County, and then they went to Mobile and actually did a role play, given a scenario of event planning, and they did very well. They placed fourth, no, third, sorry, sorry. Third place, and the top four places actually get to go to nationals. And then I have Kaena Townsend. She placed third in parliamentary procedure, and it's an objective test as well. And she will go to Orlando with us at nationals. And Kadeja Harris is not able to be here tonight, but she placed first in introduction to business ethics.
Okay.
This is ethics, business ethics, if I've written it. She placed first place in that, and we assume, we've been told that in the past, there's between 20 and 40 students that take that objective test, and she placed first out of all of those. So we're super excited for her as well. These ladies are a great representation of Pike County High School. We're very proud of them. They are also all in the Finance and Business Academy, either getting their certificate from Enterprise State or a degree from Enterprise State when they graduate in two years. So we're excited for them.
We're proud of y'all, especially the way that you represent your school, but also your community. And I know we do have a resolution for Ms. Kadeja, because she finished first, and we do, done resolution for all of those. But we also are extremely proud of you guys and the way you represented. And we have high hopes that you're going to represent us well in the nationals. And so as a commission, we voted last meeting to try to help offset some of your expenses. And thank Commissioner Pearson. He's got a check to give you girls tonight, so if you don't mind, y'all come here, we'll come out, and we'll do a chat presentation, give a picture of y'all.
As Chairman, please, stay here. We are so proud of each of you, and we thank you so much for being the advisory. And we would like to just help, just a little bit assist you with $400, $500 to help with your... We hope that will help with your trip to Orlando.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you.
Represent us well, ladies.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Congratulations.
You're a pleasure. You look up.
Thank you.
So which one of y'all is parliamentary procedure? I mean, probably needs your help. All right, so Ms. Michelle Gilmore is not here yet, so we'll move on. Neither is Judge Bun. You know...
He's coming on some of that. I've got his information, and if he requests it, we can still get him the way he's personnel, but I don't know if I can hear.
And he may come in, and Ms. Michelle may be late, because we discussed her speaking at the beginning of the regularly, and if she's in on it, so. All right. Engineer?
I have a few things for the commission this evening. First off, we'd like to request the permission from the commission to enter to agreement with H and M Contracting promoting the southern portion of the county, 183, 700 miles approximately, be running $60,000. Or less, should be less than $60,000 for that southern half. And then our forces will muddle northern half, just like we did back in October. And then, but I don't know if the next meeting is on holiday or not, depending on what that, maybe we would need to request that we suspend the rules.
Yeah, let us, we briefly discussed, we'll kind of wait and see how much business we had at that Memorial Day meeting, whether we reschedule or cancel it, so.
But that's depending on that.
When do we start?
The first weekend, June.
Okay.
Other than that, on our current business, I have a revised 2024 CTP, where I'd like to request to pay a grant match for the Canyon Road 7707 Shawley Waving Grant. And I've got that request, and here I'd like to request to pay that, to add it to the CTP that issues those funds, to pay that. Next on my list is personnel. And I actually have three items on personnel. I've got one, I would like to hire a fart time surgery operator one, Tracy Step one. We already tried to hire for this position a few weeks back, or maybe a month ago, and were not successful. The person never called us back. So after we talked to him and hired, offered him the job, they never called us back after the meeting, so we moved on, and this was the next person. And then secondly, on personnel, I have two requests for H and I, excuse me, F and I. I've got two persons that would be going out for surgery here, one tomorrow, and then a couple weeks. I'd like to apply to family medical aid. And we let everything go.
Do you have any questions for Engineer? Over the driveway problem we had with that street?
I'm sorry, say again. I apologize.
The driveway, you can look at?
As far as I know, I don't really smooth the fence yet, but I haven't heard back from him. I just haven't been up there to check and see if he has. But, you know, well, I have heard from him. I think he did come by office and ask some questions about moving the driveway, as far as that. And I think he mentioned moving the fence back then, but I don't think he, at that point in time, he had not, but I think he was.
Okay. So you mentioned, last time we talked, a little bit about the backlog and some of the, worrying on some, been thinking about all the weather we've had, some of the weather damage that we were getting reimbursed, and you were going to put us together a list of your backlog.
Yeah, we're still trying to get a map together for you on that, so it's a little easier to follow, because there's, right now, we've still got three different, one of them's a grant for smaller drain pipes we're working on. It had about 13 pipes in it. We're about halfway through that list approximately. And it actually has a deadline for this year. They want us to have it done by the end of summer, request our reimbursement back on it. So it's a grant that you guys approved last fall. And then in addition to that, we had a storm in January that qualified for, through the FHWA for ER funds, and there were about 16, 17 sites on that one. And they'll have a storm in March that are going to qualify as well, and we probably got close to 12, 13 sites on that one. Now, we've repaired probably two or three out of each bundle out of necessity, and the rest are kind of still waiting for us to get to. And that's why I wanted to put together a map and a list for everyone, so that you could see. We haven't gotten agreements yet for the two ER events. The waiting was, can't get reimbursed for the work we do on until we have those agreements in the end of the year or so. But they're 100% reimbursed, and mostly those are repairs for washes on our major flexors and shoulders, front slopes, if there's any kind of road damage that happens within those two. And then after the events this weekend and today, it is possible that, I already know we have some damage, a lot of trees down, and we do have a few washes, small washes, that we've identified already. But it's possible that it may reach that same threshold. And then we'll end up with three FHWA ER rainstorms in one spring, in one winter and spring, which is a little bit unusual, so it's higher than normal volume.
So you're not lumped those all together? Those are all individual agreements?
They are, yes. So, well, the ER, the AR, the art learning, the storm learning grant, it was more in it. You know, this time, and we're working on those, and going to get reimbursed when we get far along. The ER projects are all, each site itself is going to be an individual project. And they're all, they range anywhere from $5,000, which is the minimum, up to, I think we've got some close to $30,000. And that includes dirt repair and rip ride. It's, they consider it temporary and permanent repairs. So those are all the areas, and they range anywhere from $5,000 to $30,000 in damage.
Give us a really quick overview of the plan, where we are.
I'm going to have a pre-construction meeting with them this week. They plan about two weeks, maybe three, is the estimate I've got right now, because they started back on 29th and Deer in downtown Troy. They want to roll from head straight to knock street, go head and knock that way out, since it's right close to where they are currently. Then his plan is to move to 6641 and 6633, and then just work their way back down, as far as I understand. That's what the contractor is requesting this time today. But still probably two to three weeks. But as soon as they get a more concrete start date, we'll put some information out, so if you would, on our webpage, Facebook.
All right. Anything else for Engineer?
Yes, one thing. With the weather, they're trying to go with the flow map distribution, the little hole that we just made.
Oh, yes, yeah. It is, we had a lot of, it was a high water table when we were trying to replace that pipe. We couldn't stop the water up, kind of in that little beaver den or beaver pond it was there. So we're struggling a little bit still with that. As far as I know, it hasn't gotten anywhere, but we need to overlay that again with a little more asphalt when we get time. We had to work quickly to just, to keep the bump down and keep traffic flowing out of problems. But after, we repaired a little pothole a couple weeks ago, and as far as I know, it hasn't came back. But we're trying to keep going, and I'll actually have somebody go check it for us.
Thank you.
On the Bud Day, you know, washing your fix, your root there, you did an outstanding job.
Thank you. Probably one of our best operators, Tracy Bennett, he's been doing much of those. He's been doing an exceptional job. When he gets there, it looks really good.
All right, thanks, there.
Thank you.
You said this term was not complete. Is there anything we need to cover here, or just covering there?
Yeah.
All right. Ms. Allen, you got anything for us tonight?
No.
So session is over. Last week, our local legislation did pass, and then most of our ACCA legislation that we were backing, had we loved as well. And we should have, probably by next meeting, we'll have a report on our specific legislation. Down here, Commissioner?
I've got a request through the city, to talk to Kenzie, who's over here, to say, you know, into a shore, be taking a session next to me, talk about economic development.
Did y'all?
I don't know.
All right, Commissioner, cool. All right, the administrator?
All right, offender of my fault. The first item is going to be personnel for the probate office. It is just two employees that are in from, my friend has gone, coming off the probation period, he's questioned if Debbie fit as regular permanent employees in his office. The next item is copier lease. In your package there is a draft agreement. It's not right. They had some wrong, not numbers, but they had some wrong addresses in there, or lease agreement. We have not replaced our copier since we moved Debbie here in 2004, and they can't work on them anymore, but it still went along another two, three years. But if you all noticed, there's a line through everything that she getting out the top of your paper, if we make a copy of it for you, we can't fix it anymore. And so I finally had to save up getting us a new copier, so it's a lease for new copier. I did have that in the budget this year, because I felt like it was coming, and it's here now. So we will push that forward to current business, but that's, that's to all the other offices you use. It's a state being contract, and it's actually even under budget, but I kind of estimate the cost will be on it. And we would do it as a 36-month lease, with the option of purchase for a dollar at the end of the lease, if we would do that. Savings, just having a lease is probably, I mean, maybe $25 a month, but then you have to buy another copier, or lease another copier at the end of that. And hopefully we'll have just as good luck with this one at the end of three years, as we've had with the one we have now. So that's in there, just a request. And we'll leave that down to current business, and hopefully we'll have the updated, the correct address and everything on that paperwork. He's the guy, ended up having to go on, had to spend a medical leave, but hopefully he'll be back. We'll get that updated before the next commission meeting. Also, I gave each one of you a copy of the inmate medical claims savings, and I'll get you an email out. I got this late this afternoon, so I haven't had a chance to email it to you. Just so you know, since we started this, what, three, two, three months ago, we have had a savings of about $25,000, $125,000 dollars since March, since we've gone into contract with this medical savings company. So it's been, it's well worth the cost, but we are paying the company derivative savings a whole lot more than what it's cost to us to do it. So hopefully we'll continue to see good results with this program. And I'll get you, I'll email you all a copy of what you've got in front of you, if you have no computer to be able to look at. Under current business, the first item is, that I want to talk about is the demolition of the old jail. We actually have a project, project program book for proceeding to, with the construction document. Tommy's had some medical issues, let alone he's not able to make it to the meeting tonight. But this is all part of the original program. This is just the actual program for the demolition of the jail. We've got back our information on the, essentially whether there was asbestos in the jail. Of course, there was. We think we were always speaking that just from when it was built. And so we will have to include some costs that'll be associated with the jail, on the stage, the architects, and all that, getting everything ready to move forward with doing the, the bidding process for the demolition of jail and all that. So this is a program book that we want to go ahead and get approved, and it goes along with the same original budget that was kind of set in place for this project. So we'll want to get approval on that, so we can move forward on getting that jail demolished and that safety added out of the way for us all. So, y'all have a question about that? The next item is, Commissioner, you already talked about the red light, didn't that have passed? The building at Scott Farm, we only got one bid on that, and so I would recommend that you all award the bid for Mr. Max Scott for $503 for that portable The next item is the ADECA grant that we were approached to do with Common Ground Troy. I had spoken with Ms. Bumpy at ADECA. I think it's something, I believe I emailed you all the conversation that I've had, and after I had it, that I've been working also today with Clint Freey, and working on moving forward with that. We would need to have a contract in place with us and Common Ground Troy, and I do have a copy of that for Allen to look at. It's not a very detailed contract at all. It's just so that we can have them as being the project manager for this grant, so that we can work. We will have to be the ones that actually have to ask for the reimbursement, submit that as document and all to the state. Once they submit the correct information to us, it's not that big of a hassle. It should not be very time consuming, because if they can't provide us the right documentation for us to ask for reimbursement, we won't be seeing anything to get reimbursement for this grant. Again, this is something that they hope to have, that if they can get it, we can help them get it, they can get it. They hope to be able to take this off completely under their own sails next year. They just have a problem with an actual physical address or something, and so they're trying to get that situated. But if we go through the federal government on that, it's taken a lot longer than what they anticipated, and this way we can go and help them start this project and get it on the, get it moving for them. So if we can, with that, all we need is just approval for us to make application for this grant, and approval for the contractual agreement between us and Common Ground Troy to be able to move forward with this project with them. This is not on there, but just to give you an update, we are working on that cybersecurity grant with the state. I think I had about a two-hour Zoom call today, and I'll have two more of those this week. So we are working on that, and essentially what that'll do, they'll come back and give us recommendations on what we need to do to be in place, just to be more secure as a organization for that. And they will hopefully help with costs, whether they be implementing or creating a policy manual at first, and then looking at if we need additional hardware, software, that sort of thing. This is going to be a multi-phase grant over the next few years, but just kind of starting off with it. We're working on that. So I've been doing lots of grants today. I think I've worked on three different grants all over, it's out of home today, and that's real fun. So, but that's, I think that's all I have for tonight. Ms. Allen, any questions?
Anything for the administrator? Yeah. Number one, some of these plans, it's been on the bill for months. Have we got more act, don't we, to take it up? Yes, yes, sir. This is the same conversation we have about the, there's two, number one and number five tied together. There's a mandate by the EPA that we do something to get our own FEMA, FEMA, I'm sorry. There's a mandate by FEMA that we're required to better police things that tie into the floodplain. And so what, the reason we have both of those on there, and they've been there so long, is we're trying to get Derek to work out how we, how and if we mail them. I think he sent out last, right after last meeting, kind of a side-by-side analysis of what the city had done, so we can try to look and line some of those things up.
We're still waiting on FEMA two or ADECA to actually, like, tell us if they agree with a draft. We sent them a draft, just of what we had as well, if they agree with it on, which they should, because it's a template that we worked out with them through the ACBA and ACCA. But, so we're still waiting to hear back from them as well, just to see whether or not they agree.
Gotcha. So hopefully, if they kind of approve that, we'll have an opportunity to review and get some of those off. Anything else for the administrator? Yeah, kind of 7755, I'll be working on petition, bring this permission's probably by next week, or next month. It's a meeting I'm at. Haven't you got any input on that right now? Mr. Hummel was asking if you had any input on 7755 since last meeting?
Yep. What I've read, and on both the resolution from how many years ago that was, of doing another one now, you know, you, there's nothing that prevents that, because that was the Pike County, as we, I think we mentioned last time, that was the Pike County Commission resolution, that when they named it Carter-Bassar Road. And you can do the same. If you want to add a name, split the road, I mean, I, you know, we talk about the options you got. It'd just be another, if there's a good, clean place, you could break the road, swap, you know, cut that off and have the rest of that, the remainder of that road named after him, but that's something you could do. You could name it after him, you could add his name, have it both names. I mean, there's nothing stopping that, other than you just made him walk. Have confusion that might come out of that, but, so when we talk, Derek, remember when we talked, there's a... So when we talk, Derek, you know, remember when we talked, there's a, maybe there's a bridge. Didn't we talk about there's a bridge?
Yes, there is, there is a bridge.
I just can't remember, I think I wrote a million times, my lifetime, I just can't remember.
There's a bridge across, between, um, the dumpster church and the city, city monument there is a lot. The, just, we need to do the petition for however, y'all are very, very, whether it be the road name change, split the road to half and half, add one name half, name the other half, or if you wanted to name the bridge, bury it in our area. I think that's the options we should start by.
Well, I have talked to the family and all that, they want to go all the way, 66, 2966. Now, they want to, I give petitions to the folks that Leo told them that, really. We will have to do a label, they will do all of that. Maybe if they don't, I'll give it to them. All right, anything else?
I just got an email, I think, to y'all, where, I mean, it just came in. The, the site survey that we had done on the Joe Farm building, there is asbestos in that thing. You have to do some kind of remediation, so you can stay out of it to, to, or something. That's all I can, I can't see it for a welcome here, but I just wanted y'all to know that I did just get that and opened it up.
So they're putting together, they will put together for us the mitigation plan and the costs?
They just tell, this company, they just tell you whether or not.
This is just the company that did the?
That went out there.
Service.
Yeah, there's two spots with a pretty significant amount of asbestos, crystalline, whatever it's called. So they can put us in touch with somebody to help us with that, with what to do about it, but.
Do we need to take action for you to ask them to do that, or can we just allow you to proceed the way you have been? So we can get that site where the road's more of a condemned zone?
We bring this in, they can just provide a list of qualified and certified asbestos contractors that they'll work with for years. I mean, I can get that information and come back to you with some, with some.
So join them in, and while we're down at the jail, we should find somebody to quote it to.
Just, just going to give y'all that update since I just got it.
We will, that's it, we will adjourn the work session. We'll reconvene at 6 o'clock for the regular meeting.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay and get you here.